The specific locations identified on page 2 of the agenda, that is 315 Harbor Drive South and 1350 North Pacific Street. Negotiating parties: Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District, Helgren Sport Fishing, Oceanside Sea Center, and under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property and there's no action under that item to report under the Brown Act.
Yes, consent calendar items 4 through 15.
Move approval?
Second.
No public?
Please vote.
Motion approved for zero. Item number 16 is update on sales tax research.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Deputy Mayor and City Council Members, Deanna Larson, Assistant City Manager. The item before you tonight is an informational presentation of survey results regarding a potential half-cent sales tax measure on the November 2018 ballot. As you are aware, the City of Oceanside's revenues have not kept pace with the growing costs associated with providing municipal services and facilities. It has become increasingly challenging to maintain the quality of general city services such as crime and gang prevention, 911 response, pothole repair, and street maintenance. The city has been proactive in responding to this challenge by reducing its costs wherever feasible. However, in order to maintain service levels, additional revenue sources are needed. During development of the current year budget, the City Manager recommended and the City Council approved allocating $65,000 in one-time revenue for consultant services to evaluate a potential sales tax measure to help increase revenues to maintain critical city services. Local jurisdictions can obtain voter approval for local transaction and use taxes commonly called "sales taxes." A general tax requires approval of 50% of voters plus one. Currently, 181 out of 482 cities in California have voter-approved local sales taxes, including several that were approved last week. The current sales tax rate in Oceanside is 7.75%, while the average rate in California is 8.5%. Six cities in San Diego County have voter-approved local sales taxes ranging from 8.25% to 8.75%. In June, staff issued a request for proposals and six proposals were received by the deadline. The staff review committee unanimously recommended True North Research, Inc. of Encinitas, and subconsultant TBWB Strategies to conduct the survey. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Timothy McClarnie, President of True North Research, to present a report on the recent survey of likely Oceanside voters. After Tim's presentation, I will return to the podium.
Thank you, Deanna. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Members of Council, Madam City Manager. I'm Dr. Tim McClarnie. I am the President of True North Research, and we're a firm that over the past 15 years has specialized in working with cities around the state as well as other types of public agencies in using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. To date, my business partner and I, working as a two-person team, have designed and conducted a little over 1,000 research studies for public agencies. And about a third of the work that we do, about 350 measures today or surveys to date have been what we call "revenue measure feasibility studies," similar to what we're talking about here today, where the goal is to understand if it's feasible for an agency to move forward with some type of revenue measure. And if it is feasible, how would they go about structuring that measure in a way that it's consistent with the type of measure that their community is interested in supporting? We've had a lot of success to date with our research. We've helped raise about $29 billion in voter-approved measures throughout the state. And if you go back to 2008, and I always like to go back to 2008 because it's not only about 10 years ago, but it's also when the Great Recession hit and it became a lot more difficult to pass tax measures in that environment for the obvious reasons. We've maintained the highest success rate in the state for measures that, based on the research, we recommend go to ballot, and that's 94%. And in fact, in 2016, we had 45 measures ultimately go to ballot that we had recommended based on the research would be community-supported, and all 45 of those were successful. So we had 100% track record last year. I mention that mainly because as I go through tonight's presentation, or perhaps in response to questions from council, I may make reference to how the results we're seeing here in Oceanside compared to what we might see in other communities, and I just wanted you to have a sense for the experience base from which I would be speaking. And with that, we'll jump into the presentation. Before I talk about the results, I want to take a quick moment to review both the purpose of the study or the why we go about doing this type of research, as well as the methodology or the how we go about doing this type of research. In terms of the purpose, we're trying to really answer three sort of overarching questions when you're doing a revenue measure feasibility study. The first one is to answer that simple question, is it feasible? And when I say feasible, what I mean is if this council were to choose to place a measure on an upcoming ballot, let's say November 2018, does it have a reasonable chance of success? Right? The answer to that question isn't always yes. Sometimes we do this research and no matter how we look at the data, there's really not a path to go from where you are today to where you would need to be to where you'd have a good chance of success on Election Day with a measure. And if that's the case, we'll be the first people to tell you that. If it is feasible to move forward with a measure, the second question is, well then, how do we go about structuring a measure in a way that it's consistent with the type of measure our community is interested in supporting? Revenue measures can fund a variety of different projects, they can have different tax rates, they can be put on different election environments, all of those things. So part of the exercise of doing a study like this is to understand, you know, what is it that the community is interested in supporting so that that can help guide your revenue measure as you structure something and you move forward. And then thirdly, it's an opportunity for us to understand and gather information that will be important for the city in communicating with your community moving forward should you decide to move forward with some type of measure. I'm a big proponent of if an agency is going to take the step of putting a measure on the ballot and asking their voters to make an important decision, it's incumbent upon that agency to help inform the voters about the decision you're asking them to make. And the survey helps to guide us in that respect as well. In terms of the methodology, it's just a fancy word for how we went about conducting the study. Survey was conducted fairly recently, late September, early October of this year. We wound up speaking with over 1,300 individuals who are what we call "likely November 2018 voters." And what I mean by "likely November 2018 voter" is this is somebody who we would expect based on their voting history is likely to actually cast a ballot in the upcoming November election. Out of your total 89,000 voters in the city, about 40,000 are expected to participate in the November 2018 election. And that's the sample or the universe from which we do our sample. We then use a process called stratification and clustering. I can get into that if you like, but suffice to say that it guarantees that at the end of our sampling in our survey that we have a sample of voters, the 1,300, that are in essence a perfectly representative of that likely November 2018 universe on all the dimensions that matter for voting behavior, things like age and gender and parsonship and household party type, when they register to vote, all of these things, homeownership status. And so our sample is in fact representative of that likely November 2018 election. In terms of how we conducted the study, it was we recruited using both telephone as well as emails, and we allowed individuals the opportunity to participate by telephone or online at a password-protected website, whichever was their preference. And the survey was conducted in English and Spanish. Now, because this was a random sample of about 1,300 likely November 2018 voters and it was not a census of all of your 40,000 voters that fit that profile, it has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. And in this case, that is about plus or minus 2.6%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results I'm sharing with you here tonight are within 2.6% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your 40,000 November 2018 voters. Okay, on to the results. The first few questions in the survey are kind of warm-up questions. The first one was to ask individuals how they rate the overall quality of life in Oceanside. Would they say it's excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? And as you can see, generally in our slides, green is good or supportive, red is not good or not supportive, and orange is kind of in the middle. You see you have about 80, well, 78% of individuals who said that they would rate the quality of life as either excellent at 16% or good at 62%. You had about 18 or 19% who said it was fair, and you have less than 3% who said poor or very poor. So overall, very positive ratings for the quality of life in Oceanside. We then followed that up by asking individuals generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the City of Oceanside is doing to provide city services? Because we're not referencing a specific service like police or parks, we asked them to speak about the city's performance in general. This can be considered an overall performance rating for the city. And what you find is that 80% of the likely voters said they were satisfied with the city's performance. You had about 17% who were dissatisfied, and you had the remainder, about 3%, who were unsure. I've asked this same exact question probably 300 times for cities up and down the state. I've seen it as high as 98%. I've seen it as low as in the 40s. So 80% is a good, solid number in terms of overall satisfaction. Okay, now at this point in the survey, we get right to the heart of the matter, which is where we start talking about the revenue measure. And this slide here shows what we call our initial ballot test. And the idea is, before we get any deeper into this interview and we start talking in more detail about what the needs are for the city and the types of services that could be funded by the measure, arguments in favor, arguments opposed, we want to present to respondents a mock-up of what we think that 75-word ballot statement could look like and get their reaction. It's a good gauge of where your community is at on the natural with respect to the proposal. Shown here is the wording of that proposal, and shown here are the results. At that initial ballot test, we had 64% of likely November 2018 voters say that they would support the proposed sales tax. You had 30% who were opposed, and you had about 6% who were unsure or preferred not to answer the question. In the state of California, for a general tax, you need a simple majority for passage. So at this initial ballot test, we're about 14 points above that simple majority. Also, not shown on the slide, but you know, when we dig into the data and we start looking at support by different subgroups, by age, parsonship, homeownership status, how long they've lived in the city, there's about 30 or 40 groups that we look at. It's worth pointing out that there are only two groups out of that entire list of 40 that were supportive of this measure at under 50%. Right? So almost everybody is at least a majority support, and many were supporting well into the 70s. Now, at this point in the survey, we transitioned to what we call our "projects and programs" question. And the idea here is really twofold. One is we are now starting to educate this respondent more about the proposal. In that prior initial ballot test, we only had 75 words to play with, so we can't say a lot in 75 words. Here, we get to unpack this proposal into all the different types of services that could be funded by the measure, and in that way, you're starting to educate respondents about the proposal. The other thing it allows us to do is to understand of all the things that you could consider spending the sales tax revenues on, how do voters feel about those things? Right? Do they favor it, which is shown either as strongly favored or somewhat favored in the dark green and light green bars? Or do they oppose the idea of spending money on that, which is represented by that negative space off to the right? And what you see is that, first thing is that of all the things we tested there, almost all but one of them had 70-plus percent of voters say that they would favor the city spending some of the revenues of the sales tax on that service. At the top of the list are sort of two combinations of things. It's really public safety and public works. So you had repairing potholes and maintaining local streets at the top, reducing gang activity and drug-related crimes, keeping public areas clean and graffiti-free, providing quick responses to 911 emergencies, providing fire protection, emergency medical services. So that whole sort of top tier of services is largely public safety and public works. But obviously, as you get down the list, you still have large majorities of voters say that they would favor spending some of the money on these services. Now, at this point in the survey, we get to what we call our "argument section." And the idea is that, you know, if council chooses to place this measure on an upcoming ballot, there's going to be an election cycle. Right? And during that election cycle, you're going to have folks who will advocate, think this is a good idea, go out and advocate to the community about why this is needed and why they should support it. You might also have opponents of the measure who stand up and say, "This is a bad idea. We shouldn't be supporting this, and here are the reasons why." For this to be a reliable gauge of the feasibility of a revenue measure, we need to know not only where your voters today, which was that initial ballot test, we need to expose respondents to the types of positive and negative arguments that they're likely to encounter during an election cycle, so we have an understanding of how that experience may ultimately shape their willingness to support this measure. And so we do that first by testing positive arguments. And the nature of the question is, supporters of the measure say blank, you insert a positive argument. Do you think this is a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing reason to support the measure? And what we see is that, you know, a lot of the positive arguments resonate with your voters, but at the top, there's sort of three that stand out. And it make, when you listen to the arguments, they jive well with what we saw about the services that voters care most about, which is public safety and public works. So the first one was about that fast emergency times for 911 calls are critical for saving lives, and that this measure will ensure that we have enough police officers, firefighters, and paramedics to respond quickly to 911 emergencies. And the second one was that the measure allowed the city to keep up with basic repairs and maintenance to streets, storm drains, and public facilities, and if we don't take care of it now, it becomes more expensive to repair in the future. So at this point in the survey, voters have now heard a bit more about your proposal than they did at the initial ballot test. Right? The initial ballot test, they only had the 75 words. Now they've learned more about the types of services that could be funded, they've heard the positive arguments. So we circle back and we say, okay, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what we see is that support for the measure ticks up slightly to 65%. You've got about 29% who are opposed, and you have about 6% who are unsure. And then we go to the negatives. And you'll notice right away that we test fewer negatives than positives. The reason we do that is because that tends to be an accurate reflection of what happens during an election cycle. You know, the folks who are the advocacy campaign that go out and campaign on behalf of a measure tend to be much larger in number, have more resources, are more organized, and basically just have a louder voice, right, than the opposition. And that's typically the case. And so we simulate that by testing fewer negatives. That said, the negatives we test are designed to be hard-hitting negative arguments, the kind that opponents will generally use. And so you see that a couple of them get some traction. You know, the idea that taxes are already too high, can't afford another tax increase, this is especially true for seniors and others on fixed incomes. That's a typical kind of negative argument you would see during an election cycle. So we test the negatives. The real question is what happens afterwards? How much does support erode once you hit voters with these negative arguments? And what you see is that we do tick down about three points, but we still end the survey at 62%, which is about 12 points above that simple majority required for passage of a general tax in California. So what does all this mean? I've got a couple of slides on this, and then I believe I'm handing back to Deanna briefly. The first thing I'm going to do is circle back to that overarching question I mentioned at the outset of the presentation, which is, is it feasible? Right? If the city were to choose to place a sales tax measure on the November 18 ballot, does it have a reasonable chance of success? And what you see here is, when you look at these numbers and based on my experience doing this for a lot of different public agencies, the answer to that is clearly yes. A lot of the things that we want to see in place for a measure to have a reasonable chance of success are in place here. We saw, first of all, that voters clearly value the services they receive from the City of Oceanside, and they clearly wish to see these not only maintained but improved. We saw that there was a strong natural support for the local sales tax to fund city services and projects. By "natural," I mean that initial ballot test, that was their initial gut reaction to that 75-word statement. We had 64% of voters say that they would support at that point. The services and projects that the city is considering using the funds for are popular. The positive arguments that we tested resonated. And importantly, at each point in the interview where we circled back to a respondent, we said, "Okay, now that you've heard more about this measure, where do you stand?" We found that you had well above that simple majority required for passage. And so when we see these kind of pieces, it tells us you not only have a reasonable chance of success, you have a good chance of success on the November 18 ballot. Now, having said that, I want to say a few things, the first of which is probably the most important, which is it's important to keep in mind that a poll like this is not a crystal ball, right, looking forward to Election Day and saying, "You're going to get 64% on Election Day." It's a snapshot in time which tells us where your community is at today, and also how their support for this measure tends to move based on the types of information they could encounter as they move forward. And I say that mainly because as promising as these poll results are, right, what ultimately happens on Election isn't dictated by what your poll says today. It's sort of all the decisions and actions that happen from this point forward. So it's a reminder that as you structure this measure, you want to keep in mind your community and your voters, and what their priorities are, and make sure that this measure is structured in a way that it's consistent with what they said they are interested in supporting. And it's important that you get out and talk to the community and continue that engagement with them. So, you know, if you decide to place this on the measure, when they go in to vote on it next November, they aren't surprised when they see it on the ballot. Right? It's important that they know more about this decision you're asking them to make. With those things in mind, there's a couple points I would say. Clearly, although your voters were very supportive of many uses for these funds, the priorities were public safety and public works, and that's the bullets that you see there. And so as you continue, if you should choose to move forward, as you continue to have a conversation with the community, you know, these are the kind of measures that you don't want to just make a decision and put it on the ballot and walk away. Right? It's important that you continue to talk with your community, you talk to opinion leaders, you talk to stakeholders, and this is really the first step in this process, not the last step. So that is the end of my presentation. I think Deanna has a couple comments.
Thank you. That was very thorough and rapid. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. So, Honorable Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, as you are aware, the city's next scheduled general election is on November 6th of 2018. The deadline to place a measure on the November 2018 ballot would be August 10th of 2018, and in order to put a measure on the ballot, you would require a 2/3 vote of the City Council, which would be four affirmative votes. It's estimated that a half-cent sales tax would raise $11.2 million in annual revenue that would be revenue directly to the City of Oceanside to fund city services. State law requires that the ballot question include the duration of the tax to be levied, and as Tim noted in the ballot question, the survey utilized a duration of seven years. So in order to continue to obtain community input on priorities as well as to educate the community on the city's current and projected financial condition and services, staff is negotiating a contract with TBWB Strategies for additional community outreach. This will include an informational website and an online survey so that voters who were not selected for the random survey have the opportunity to provide input, as well as community presentations and informational materials. It's anticipated that the contract would be executed prior to year-end in order to initiate activities after the holidays. And that concludes my presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
No public on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
No public. I really wanted to hear from the public. I was really waiting with anticipation the results of the survey because I really wanted to know what our community thought about doing something like this. We pride ourselves in doing the most with the funds that we have. We're not Carlsbad. Services, as we grow as a community, the public continues to have the same expectations in terms of services, that we're going to continue to try to meet that or exceed the six-minute response time, that the crime continue to remain low, that we have an ambiance that is welcoming to current residents and future residents and businesses, and that we continue to flourish as a community. And, but it is definitely a challenge to continue to provide the same level of service every year as our community grows and as infrastructure begins to age and we begin to have higher needs. So I am pleasantly surprised that we had such a positive response to this question, but as has been stated, we need to definitely engage the community. We're talking about a low voter turnout, and yet because of some of the election races that, for example, the 49th Congressional District, there's a lot of voter activity going on, a lot of discussions happening at the neighborhood level. I think it might actually be higher than that, which means that we need to talk to even more people. So, but this is something that I believe we ought to do as a community. I think that the only way to, well, let me say first, that $11 million would be wonderful to have to ensure that we continue and fiscally prudent as we can continue to go forward and provide the level of services and ensure that we continue to have the kind of success that we've been having in terms of providing services. So if we were to do this, I would definitely want to make sure that the community supports it. I'd want to make sure that we have, you know, presentations by, say, the city staff, I don't know if that's something that we could do, to different community groups, different senior groups, HOAs, and then go forward, place it on the ballot in November, see how the community, because this is really, this is something that we can't force. It would have to be at least 50% plus one. And I think that the community has, I think even those that did not participate in the survey probably would agree what the top kind of priorities are. I agree those are the priorities. After 17 years of serving the community, I believe, you know, I agree with those priorities. So I was really hoping to hear from the community, starting today, but not having heard, I'm hoping that as we go forward, you know, we invite the community to have this dialogue because this is for our future, for our citizens, for our kids. So I'm, you know, I'm pleased with the results. I definitely want to go forward in terms of working with communities, and I look forward to putting this on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Can you answer a couple of questions about what a public information campaign would look like?
Sure. Probably best to have Jared mention that, to speak to that.
So we also have with us today Jared with TBWB Strategies, and they specialize in the informational component of this process, and so I'll have Jared come to the podium and he can answer your questions.
Thank you.
Hi, Deputy Mayor, Members of Council, Jared Boygan with TBWB Strategies. So, I actually don't like to use the word "campaign." It's really an outreach effort, and as the council member mentioned, it's a two-way dialogue with the community. What Tim has provided is quantitative data and feedback about what a statistically reliable sample of likely voters think. But it's also really important, I think, to get qualitative feedback. And so the process that we'll develop working with city staff is one that with a series of, you know, presentations and conversations, and also some written materials and potential mailings, give citizens and residents a chance to weigh in themselves on priorities for the city, questions about the budget, questions about the need, how you might use the funds, and also help them understand, we can provide them a little bit more information. You know, the folks who took Tim's survey had the opportunity to be on the phone for 17 minutes or go through an email conversation, you know, that kind of walked them through some narrative. It's important for us to take the effort to give other citizens and residents the same information and try and hear from them now that we know that it is feasible to be on the ballot and be successful. So that's what goes into an effort like that.
So, when I had a discussion a few days ago about this, there was some statement made about that it wouldn't be our people, the city staff, or whatever going out to do any kinds of informational meetings, that that would be third-party, or if the city staff went out, they would have to go out not to present anything advocating or opposing, but they would just say, "These are the facts of what's happening."
That's correct. The city cannot- The cities cannot advocate for or against passage of a measure, so working closely with the city attorney will create balanced factual informational materials. But it is very common practice for city staff in lots of cities in California to have this dialogue with their voters and residents prior to coming back to council and saying, "You had quantitative feedback, let us give you some qualitative feedback from what we heard from residents, and now we're going to make a recommendation to you about whether or not to proceed next year," which, you know, quite frequently, we find that feedback to be very similar to what you get in the voter survey, but it's important to go through that exercise.
Do you have any kind of idea about how much outreach there would actually be?
Well, we'll be developing the plan, but I think, you know, one thing we've done in, you know, in other cities in the county, for example, is send a piece of mail with a tear-off survey comment card to everybody. We'll work with city staff to make a list of groups and organizations in town where it's helpful to go and have a dialogue with folks, and, you know, help equip city staff with, you know, materials and frequently asked questions and that kind of thing to go have those conversations. So, I can't tell you exactly how many there will be, but, you know, it should be thorough, for sure.
That's great. Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question to conversation that we just had. I had understood that staff would not be able to participate in that kind of dialogue or presentation, once there is a decision to place a matter on the ballot, but not before. So, if what we're doing is having a dialogue, then we can send staff to answer questions, can we not?
Yes, we can provide information. We can't provide advocacy. That's the bright line rule. There's a case called, I think it's Stanson versus Mott, that basically stands for the proposition that we can't spend public funds on advocacy for a ballot measure one way or the other, but we can provide information. And so, sending staff out to provide the facts would be acceptable.
Right. And especially before we even decide on whether or not we're going to have a ballot measure, right? Before the actual vote.
Sure.
It's much, much more liberal interpretation of what staff can do, right?
I don't know that it's a more liberal interpretation, but as long as we maintain the role of providing factual information and engaging in a dialogue and not getting into advocacy, we're okay.
Yeah, because I anticipate that what the public would want to know is basically, perhaps, going through budgets and saying, "Well, how much, you know, at what point do you think we're going to not be able to provide this actual same level?" You know, like diminishing kind of numbers, and how things end up costing more over time. So, I think that's where I think the public would want to know, "How much does it cost to provide X number of services?"
Okay. Councilmember Feller.
I have one quick question. We didn't talk about it at all, designating the proceeds for specific things. And could you run through that a little bit so that people would understand that as well?
I can respond to that. Councilmember Feller, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. In order to have a general tax, which is a simple majority, 50% approval, the proceeds of that tax have to be available for general purposes. If you designate tax proceeds for a special purpose, that becomes a special tax that then requires a two-thirds voter approval. And the measure that we did the feasibility analysis on would be a general tax for general city services.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Another follow-up, actually, statement. When we met, we went through the different groups. Would you say there were 15 groups or so? And I understand that one of the groups would have been, like, the senior community, that there was definitely support within the senior community. I would want to prioritize in terms of, you know, getting out to the community to get feedback, to go out to especially those that are on fixed incomes, to, you know, to kind of test your test, you know, with the senior community and perhaps lower-income neighborhoods, to, you know, make sure first that there is an education component, and also to get feedback on it. And I would suspect that it's probably similar, because we all care about ensuring, you know, public safety, as you said, public safety and public projects, public works projects. So, that would be my direction.
I'd like to just comment, you know, one of the things about the November 2018 election environment is, you know, seniors are really disciplined voters, right? They always turn out. And when you look at that November election environment, almost half, 46%, of the likely voters are seniors. And when we looked at their support level at the initial ballot test, it was very close to the average, it was 65% on the nose at the initial ballot test. That's like one point above the average. So, not disagreeing with you that more outreach is a good thing, and you always want to talk to some of those groups, but you can take comfort in looking at the results here that it isn't that, "Oh, seniors are going to be hurt by this," and they don't like it, but they're a minority of the group. They're actually almost the majority of the voters who cast ballots in our, who would cast ballots in November and participate in our survey.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this was an information-only item, and thank you for the presentation, very clear, very helpful. Thank you. Item 17, professional services agreement.
Yes, item number 17 is approval of professional services agreement with Black and Beach of San Diego in the amount of $1,868,757 for the Integrated Organic Waste-to-Energy Biosolids Master Plan project, approval to appropriate $1.25 million from the solid waste and sewer fixed asset replacement funds, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement.
Welcome, Mr. Kepler.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Honorable Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, Greg Kepler, Principal Water Engineer, Water Utilities. So, this evening, we have before you the item to approve a professional services agreement with Black and Beach of San Marcos for the Integrated Organic Waste-to-Energy Biosolids Master Plan project, with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,868,757, and to appropriate $1.25 million from the sewer fixed asset replacement fund, and authorize a city manager to execute the agreement with Black and Beach. To give you a little bit of background on this particular project, in June of 2012, the city approved the Oceanside Zero-Waste Strategic Resource Management Plan, and this plan identified various options for diverting waste from landfills using many different tools. Through these efforts, the city has been able to achieve a 68% diversion rate of inorganic materials going to landfills. And in the last three years, there were bills passed at the state level which require organic materials to now be diverted from landfills in order to help California meet its greenhouse gas reduction goals. So, in response to these requirements, the city last year commissioned an organic feasibility study, and this study is nearly complete. The study analyzed and made recommendations for organic waste diversion within the city, including upstream solutions, which are through doing food recovery, as well as downstream solutions, including organic waste processing, and beneficial reuse opportunities. The feasibility study recommends the most practical downstream solution identified in the organic feasibility study is to basically divert waste for the Integrated Organic Waste-to-Energy Biosolids program to the San Luis Rey water reclamation facility. So, the first step in this process is to cultivate a biosolids program, is to develop the biocycle. And in its simplest form, the biocycle looks at where and how waste is generated, what's in the waste, and how to transform the waste into more usable forms and products. As we develop this biocycle, we will be better able to understand the value of the organic waste coming into the plant, and return what were once discarded materials back to the community as transformed resources for beneficial reuse. And some of these would include extra gas that we could use to generate electricity, fertilizers, things of that nature. The next step brings it to the plant, and it involves transforming the discarded materials into usable forms or inputs, specifically at San Luis Rey, through a plant evaluation. These inputs include evaluating the liquid waste that's currently coming into the plant, solid waste that would be coming into the plant, as well as the energy that's needed to process these wastes. It requires an understanding of the processes that will be affected at the plant, and what improvements will be needed to accommodate these waste streams. And secondly, we need to understand what end products are generated and how they are most beneficially reused. For example, we anticipate that by doing food waste injection into the digesters at the San Luis Rey facility, we're going to be able to produce more gas. That gas would in turn be able to used for generating electricity, and the hope is that we would, at the very least, be able to make the San Luis Rey water reclamation facility energy-neutral, and we would possibly even be able to create a surplus of gas and use it for other beneficial resources, like, for example, powering fleet vehicles through natural gas, producing extra electricity, sending it back to the grid. Lastly, once the plant evaluation process is complete, a biosolids master plan can be generated. The biosolids master plan will be our roadmap to achieving the requirements as outlined in AB 1826 and SB 1383. It will develop a systematic way to plan and implement both near-term and long-term solutions at the San Luis Rey water reclamation facility. And as I mentioned in the example, one of the ways we're going to do this is to design, and with council approval, ultimately construct a pilot which would allow us to assess the food injection into the wastewater treatment plant at San Luis Rey to confirm the additional gas production, and validate anticipated impacts to the plant, and refine, if necessary, a strategy for dealing with these impacts. So, in June of this year, we issued an RFP to seven firms, and we received two proposals, one from Black and Beach and one from Corolo on July 7th. And staff evaluated the proposals that we received, and determined that Black and Beach had addressed all of the requirements of the RFP, and was highly qualified to provide the services that were requested. So, the cost for this agreement is $1,868,757. Currently, we have a remaining budget of $651,500 in the Food-to-Waste Energy CIP project. This represents a shortfall of about $1.25 million, and therefore, we're recommending $1.25 million be appropriated from the sewer fixed asset replacement fund. And this additional appropriation will provide sufficient funding to complete this study, as well as cover any additional expenses or contingencies that come up. Currently, the sewer fixed asset replacement fund has an unrestricted balance of $7.45 million, therefore sufficient funds are available for this project. In conclusion, staff's recommending the approval of a professional services agreement with Black and Beach for $1,868,757, for the Integrated Organic Waste-to-Energy Biosolids Master Plan project, appropriation of $1.25 million from the sewer fixed asset replacement fund, and for the city manager to execute the agreement with Black and Beach. And I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you.
No public on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Feller.
Greg, could you go back to the picture of the site?
This one?
Yes. So, where is that building in the upper corner?
The, in the upper left-hand corner?
Upper-right. It says compost curing and storage.
Right. So, this figure is a figure that came from the proposal. It's purely theoretical in nature. One of the things that Black and Beach will be doing is looking at composting opportunities throughout the city. This is certainly one facility that'll be looked at. The particular location that is shown in this figure may or may not be viable. But to answer your question, that is somewhat near the solar array, over near Wieland Lake, the entrance into the wastewater treatment plant.
That's an enclosed building?
In general, we would be considering enclosed buildings for any of these types of facilities.
I'm thinking that some of that has to be thought out pretty clearly as they go through their study, because that is really close to homes.
Absolutely.
And the other piece back here on the bottom of the picture is, kind of, it'll maybe bother the people on the 14th or 15th green at Camp Pendleton more than anybody, but anyway, that's my only comment. I'll move, moving forward, staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Kern.
Yeah, I saw part of this operation up in the City of Orange at the waste management facility, so I haven't seen the backend side of this. And I think, you know, this is kind of the future that we need to be going to recover this. It's going to get harder and harder to recycle materials here in California, because China's changed their parameters about what they can take. So, it's going to be more and more difficult to reach our recycling goals. So, this will really help us tremendously to do that. Plus, the idea of the site benefit, we do actually, I would hope, to be energy-neutral at the plant. I think anything above that would be beneficial, but I think if we can run the plant at entry-neutral, I think everybody benefits from that. My only concern is the replacement of the money in the fixed asset account for wastewater, because that's always been our problem, is the wastewater system, our piping and those type of issues. So, hopefully, we have enough money left. I, just a quick calculation, we have about $6 million left in that account after we allocate this. So, going forward, you know, we can make sure that we maintain the system that we have to. I don't want to sacrifice our current system to doing something new, so hopefully, we can move that forward. But I will support this motion. Thank you.
Was that a second? Was he at first?
I seconded. I didn't have my mic on.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up to Councilmember Feller's comments and questions. Was there any outreach to the communities nearby about the potential for building this facility there, and potential impacts, and how they would be addressed, and how, you know, I'm sure technology continues to march forward. So, what are we talking about? Are we talking about being able to control most of the, let's say, odors coming from such a facility?
So...
So, two parts, you know, outreach, and is that, is that me? No, it's not me. Okay, just wanted to mention...
Councilmember Sanchez, Honorable Deputy Mayor Lowery, councilmembers. Really, the first phase of this project is to do some assessment and some planning. So, none of the infrastructure... So none of the infrastructure that you see as potentially constructed is, is being contemplated at this point. Certainly, as we develop a plan and have something in place.
But we are talking about spending 1.8 plus million dollars.
Absolutely. And so part of the scope of work would certainly entail doing some outreach, some market analysis to help us develop the master plan to find out what's feasible at this site or what may be feasible at other locations.
Right. And, and points for the public, like why, why are we doing this? What, what are the benefits to the community, to the immediate community, impacts, and, and what we're basically making a commitment that we're going to address most, all, potential impacts?
So a couple of the key drivers are legislation that was passed at the state level that are requiring us to do this. We're viewing this as an opportunity.
Right.
And I think, so the benefits would be by doing this analysis and doing some cost-benefit analysis, particular, particularly as it relates to energy production. I think if there's an opportunity there to save the ratepayers money by having the treatment plant energy neutral or possibly even have it generate excess energy, that that would be a benefit to the community.
Okay. So the costs, eventual cost to the community, that is a big benefit. And I'm sure you'll find additional.
Cost savings, absolutely. And a cost-benefit analysis is certainly going to be done for this project.
Okay. And as to the selection, I guess there's just two who submitted. And I understand that Black and Beach, we had possibly worked with them sometime in the past. But these, they're experts in this. Is that, that's one of the differences between them and Corolla?
Correct. They have done numerous of these projects throughout California. They are the leaders in doing this type of work.
Okay. I noticed that when, when you talked about, you know, the points and how they came up on top, one of the questions was, had they done any work? And I'm, I'm assuming with the City of Oceanside in the last 12 months. And Black and Beach got 10 points for that, and Corolla got zero because Corolla has been doing work with the city.
Correct.
And so what is the significance of that? What, why is, does it have to do with trying to be fair in terms of selecting contracts for the city? What is the significance? Because if you take those 10 points away for that question, then Black and Beach would have gotten 67.2 percent and Corolla would have gotten 66.7.
In general, I think that's the intent of that particular scoring system is to possibly make it more fair for, for firms who haven't been able to do a lot of work for the city to come in and be able to get work. I think it is also a benefit. Helps spread some of the risk around in terms of who we're working with.
Right. But above and beyond this, this scoring, there was addition, there were additional, like interviews and also expertise that was taken into consideration in picking Black and Beach. Is that correct?
Correct. We actually convened pre-proposal proprietary meetings with each firm that wanted to do those.
Right. Well, this is embarking on untested, you know, territory for citizens of Oceanside and for our community. So I'm asking these questions because I know it's a lot of money. And, and certainly, we want, we want to do what's best for our community, including neighborhoods that, that would be nearby such a project. So I'm going to support this. I think that it, it would, it will be a good project in the end, but only if we're able to address every single impact that it would have on, say, the local citizens as well as ensuring the costs.
And if I could clarify something, essentially, their fee, the way it was broken down is roughly half is to prepare the master plan itself, and then roughly the other half of the contract values to do design work.
The engineering?
Correct. So we wouldn't have them move forward with doing the design work unless the master plan really supported this notion of doing this type of work and these improvements and that they were actually a benefit to the community. If it turns out that the master plan suggests that there's not a lot of benefit, then we wouldn't move forward with doing the design work.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So that leaves me. And I'm, I have a very basic question. Is this not a result of state regulation that we have to comply with?
That is one of the key drivers.
So we are, have to do this. We don't have a choice of not doing it. We're doing the most extensive version we can and the most effective use of the waste material that will be turned into fuel that may be, may be used to run that site.
Correct. That would be one of the opportunities. Other opportunities are fertilizers and things of that nature for our ag community as both locally and potentially regionally, we'll, we'll be looking at those things as well.
So this isn't just something that your department made up for us to spend a bunch of money on, is it?
Absolutely not.
Yes, that's what I thought. So I believe that the design that you've, you know, sketched out here is effective at doing what's, what Councilmember Kern mentioned is already in operation in Orange County. And we will, instead of giving the material away to someone else, it has a value, and we will convert that into a fuel to run a plant with because the state has told us that we have to do something with the material besides put it into the landfill.
Correct.
So we're taking, it's almost proactive. People haven't heard of this happening already in the area because it's a very recent state law, and we're trying to move ahead and stay in compliance and yet thoughtful at the same time. So has this ever been done before?
This has been done up and down the state.
Yeah. And do you think that there have been issues with neighbors that haven't been addressed before this plant would be presented to us? I mean, already, if it's been done up and down the state, people have experienced whether or not it smells and whether or not there's material running off the site and that kind of thing, so.
Black and Beach has a lot of lessons learned from doing these projects, and they'll certainly share those with us. So if mistakes were made, we won't make those mistakes.
That's great. Well, thank you very much.
They're here?
Yes, we have a representative here from Black and Beach.
Can you introduce?
Absolutely. Yeah, Matt Thomas, would you like to come up here? This is Matt Thomas from Black and Beach.
We're going to ask for your date of birth and, and a few other things.
Well, since I'm up here, so my name's Matt Thomas. I'm with Black and Beach. I'll be the, well, I was the proposed project manager. I'll be the project manager on the project. And we're, we're very excited to work on the project. You probably, those of you probably don't know that I'm actually a resident of Oceanside for the last 20 years, so I'm, I'm personally invested in making this project.
That's, that's a very big plus.
Good.
Do you live near this? No, no.
I'm sorry?
Do you live near the site, the potential site?
No, I don't. But I'm very, I'm personally invested in making the project successful. And it's a proven process that we've gone through before, but there is a lot of innovation here. This new regulation is, is just that. It's new. It's an emerging area, and we're, we're excited to, to do something innovative with you on this.
Yeah, I toured the facility in the City of Orange, up in Orange County, where all of the, well, I don't know who's bringing the volume in, but truckloads of, of garbage was coming into this facility, and it was being dumped and made into a BioSolids, which is what we're talking about here. And they were trucking that BioSolid that was, they said it was the density of oatmeal. And it was being moved into Los Angeles where they were using it for fuel to run sewer treatment plants there. So this is an awesome situation, that system that's already in place. It was like going to the future to see that earlier this year and realize that we have the opportunity to do that here, too. So congratulations for being in the right field at the right time and living in the right city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And where have you done projects, Black and Beach?
Yeah, the biggest, most recent one was actually for the Orange County Sanitation District, which was a multi-year study. And we're now doing environmental regulatory permitting on that project. They already have an extensive BioSolids, basically waste-to-energy system there. So they are largely energy neutral at their plants in Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley. But they are now taking on the challenge of bringing organic waste streams into the plant to address these new state regulations. So that's our most recent one. We've also in, in the local area done similar work for Encina. We're doing one for the Santa Leo Joint Powers Authority now, a small project with them, as well as the City of Escondido.
That's great. Could we vote on this?
Yeah, he's.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved for zero.
Great. Thank you.
Item number 18.
Public hearing on.
Yes. Item number 18 is adoption of resolution approving regular coastal permit to allow the installation of two 80-square-foot portable kiosks to house ticketing operations for two separate commercial boat charter enterprises within the Oceanside Small Craft Harbor.
I, I want to make a comment first that we already approved the contracts at the harbor just earlier in this meeting. And this is a, one item that remains, but everything else has already been approved. Thank you. Welcome, Russ.
Disclosures. Disclosures.
Disclosures.
Staff.
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 I actually met with staff several times on this issue, and I met with Oceanside Adventures who are actually going to take one of the kiosks.
All material's been provided to the council.
Deputy Mayor Lowery, councilmembers, good evening. I'm Russ Cunningham with the City's Planning Division. As the deputy mayor has observed, this proposal relates to lease agreements which were on this evening's consent calendar and that have been approved. Staff is recommending council approval or harbor board approval of the installation of two portable kiosks at separate locations within our Small Craft Harbor. The kiosks are 80 square feet in area each. They would be located within Harbor Village to the west of the Harbor Village Building and within Parking Lot 5, which is just north of the building that houses Joe's Crab Shack. And I'll show you in a moment more precisely those locations. The kiosks would provide secure enclosed space for ticket sales for boat charter operations within the harbor. These are existing boat charter operations. This proposal is subject to the policies of our local coastal program with this property being within our coastal zone and the appeal jurisdiction of our coastal zone, and also subject to the harbor design guidelines of the Harbor Precise Plan. So just a little bit of background, three boat charter enterprises currently operate within the harbor. You have approved lease agreements with those three entities this evening. The former site of Helgren's Sport Fishing, that permanent facility north of the Harbor Village Building, northeast of the Harbor Village Building, is to be occupied by the Oceanside Sea Center, which provides sport fishing charters as well as educational and research excursions. Existing kiosks and other enclosed spaces within the harbor have been determined to be not particularly well-suited for the use proposed for these two new kiosks. Projects within the appeal jurisdiction of the coastal zone and this entire harbor is within that appeal jurisdiction require discretionary approval, a coastal development permit. And that permit can be appealed to the California Coastal Commission. There will be a 20-day appeal period after the filing of the notice of final action. So I mentioned that one of the kiosks would be located on the southern edge of the harbor near the Harbor Village Building. And this illustrates that location. It's important to note that this is an existing concrete pad that extends off of the pedestrian walkway in this area. And the other location is northward and eastward, again, north of the building that houses the Crab Shack Restaurant. In terms of kiosk design, the kiosk on the left is a kiosk already in the possession of the Harbor District. The Harbor District is going to work with the Planning Division to render this particular kiosk consistent with the harbor design guidelines, which call for pitched roofing and for wood cladding akin to what you see on the right here. So the kiosk to the right is one that may have been purchased. I'm not sure if it has, but there is an intention to purchase the kiosk on the right, and the kiosk on the left will be modified to look more similar to the kiosk you see there on the right. So again, our recommendation is that the board approve coastal permit 1710 to allow the installation of these two kiosks within the Small Craft Harbor. We find that the project is consistent with applicable standards and guidelines. It will provide for visitor-serving recreational uses, which, as you know, are a high priority of the local coastal plan. It will not impede public access to the coastline or other harbor amenities being off of the pedestrian pathways. It would not compromise significant public views of the coastline, and it would conform to the harbor design guidelines and achieve visual compatibility with the surrounding built environment. I will note that we have received two expressions of concern about the installation. I believe those materials made their way to you, email correspondence and photographs. In particular, there's concern that kiosks might impede pedestrian travel and pedestrian access in the area. As I pointed out, the kiosk would be located outside of those pedestrian travel areas. There's also concern that the kiosks would impede views of the harbor. The LCP does not identify views within the harbor of the harbor as significant coastal view sheds, so we believe that it would not impede a designated significant view quarter. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez.
Hold on, there's a public on this item?
Oh, sorry, public comment, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, this is a public hearing item? We do have two members of the public who've turned in forms. Anyone else who hasn't is going to be able to have the opportunity to speak in a moment. First, we have Randy Sly, followed by Charmin Sly. Randy Sly and Charmin Sly?
Oh, perfect. I'm so sorry. There you go.
Two lines, I mean, two podiums, either one, they're both operable. Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
My name's Randy Sly. I live in Oceanside, near Tri-City Hospital. I've been a homeowner in the city since '74 and frequent user of Oceanside Harbor. And initially with, you know, launching watercraft in the harbor, but most recently actually using the harbor as a place to go for dates with my wife. She'll be speaking also. The issue that I'm concerned with is one of the kiosks that's described by, I missed the gentleman's name, and the kiosk that would be actually in front of the restaurant Rocking Baja Lobster. And it's kind of to the south and the west of the, of the harbor pathway that we're talking about. I, I would argue the point that it actually will restrict people flow through that area. There are currently two kiosks, one in front of the lighthouse and then one adjacent to the Rocking Baja Lobster. On a Saturday or a Sunday with foot traffic coming to and from the beach and any activity at all, you literally cannot get through that passageway. The passageway right now is probably about nine feet where people have to move. And there have been times when I literally had to stop moving, allow other people to pass, and then I could proceed in my way. So my, my concern, number one, is that it's just a bottleneck. I mean, there's more room down Albertson's shopping lanes than there would be to walk by the harbor, to be in front of Rocking Baja Lobster, to get past any of those places. That's concern one. Concern two is that people go to the harbor because they kind of want to look at the boats, want to look at the water. There will now be three kiosks completely obstructing the view that you can see on the pathway that goes from Helgren's. the pathway that goes from Helgren's to Rockin' Baja Lobster. And Mission Creek through the years, I think I'm over my time, I apologize, Mission Creek through the years, what I've seen is that tables have moved out on the restaurants, tables have been added next to the cement wall, to the point where there is, I mean, I'm just calling it a pretty serious bottleneck. That's my concern, and that's why I came forward.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the wife, I get the dates, it's cool. Again, forty-five years here in Oceanside, my name is Sharman, I'm sorry, Sharman Sly. And that long a resident and a user of the harbor with boats and kids and, you know, eating and dates for cheap coffee and ice cream. And I'm, I think I was the first one who noticed that it took me a lot of time to get from Helgren's through to Baja Lobster because there is room for two people to walk, but three is a tight squeeze through there. Now, that restaurant's having built out is great, and it creates a lot of ambiance and neat things for the harbor, but at the same time, the rest of us have to get through there. And there is no way to avoid the oncoming traffic unless you stand to the side. And we were down there on Sunday, and there were about thirty people lined up to take one of the boat tours, and they were standing at the top of the ramp, and we were just trying to get, you know, just the two of us through, and we were going one at a time. We had to actually ask people, could you stand aside so we could get through? In, the assessment that it does not block view, I think, is patently false. As you're walking through, the first kiosk that you come to is a small one, it's by Wyndham, okay? And you have to go completely around it, and that was the area where the bottleneck was, there are three. So you walk around that, and that's where we had to ask if we could pass through. And then you get through that, and you've got an area maybe from here to not quite here. And again, two can pass, three is tight. You walk down a little ways, and you come to the first large kiosk, the, one of the eight-by-ten wood ones, which are cute, but they're in the way. And you have to make a sharp left turn, again, you have to turn aside and let the oncoming traffic come through because not both can go. Then you get, oops. Okay, well, the space between the kiosks that exist is being completely taken up by merchandise. And that also is a place where you can't get in to watch and look and stand or sit on a bench and look at the, at the harbor, at the water activities that are going on, at the kayakers and all, other things that are, that you want to be there for. I mean, you don't come down necessarily to buy stuff, you buy stuff while you're there, I bought stuff from those kiosks myself. But they could be moved to put in underneath that stairway that goes from the, from the waterfront to the parking lot in the back. Two of them would, could fit there, and another small one could be added for Helgren's, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this item may come forward this time. Deputy Mayor, I see none.
Thank you. I knew it, I knew it. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Did you, did you have a diagram where it would be?
A couple times.
Right, can, I mean, can you put it up?
I can.
Thank you. Okay, it's not real clear here that it doesn't block pedestrian, but, I mean, I've, I've been in the harbor a lo, a lot, and it is seasonal, of course, during the summer, it's, it's very crowded, and if you want to stop and get fish and chips, at Harbor Fish and Chips, it's really difficult to, but it, it's part of the ambiance, right? It's, it's having a lot of people there, and, uh, my sense, what I had understood and what I still understand is that the pedestrians, pedestrian traffic will not be impeded, but yes, obviously, when you have more people, and of course, that's what we're trying to do, is get more people to come to the harbor to enjoy it and to spend more time, and, and in fact, to shop in the harbor, because we definitely need businesses to prosper. So I, my understanding is that the, you know, even though, you know, yes, it does get busy, and yes, you do have to slow down when it does get busy, I believe this, this is a positive for the harbor to have additional, additional opportunities for boaters, for people who would like to, you know, enjoy the, the water, and so I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
And adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Kern.
Am I up next, anyway?
You were.
Oh, thanks. First of all, you know, I'm, you know, I have to give compliments to Doug Adal and the, and the property management staff and the city attorney's office. This has been a long, arduous process of redoing these leases with the vendors down there and placing these kiosks, and so this, I think, is a great compromise of how we got this done. So, I mean, I really have to compliment them because this, I, I know this was difficult. And I, also to Donna Kalitz for her patience of going through and getting these all done. So I, I think this is a great addition to the harbor. I, I think these are, looking at the one that's a catacorner from Rockin' Baja Lobster, I don't think it impedes pedestrian traffic at all because it is already an existing pad off the side. So I'm going to support this motion, and hopefully you can get it done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. I just might add that we have our new director of harbor and beaches here, and maybe he can throw a fresh eye on how traffic passes through that, sorry to interrupt here, I know Kyle's, throw a, a new, a new look at, or a, a fresh eye at the situation and see if there's a way to make that more passable. The Johnny Mananas is, I'm Johnny Manan.
Right down here?
That's right over here. The, John and his coffee shop, that's, I mean, that's a pinch point, too, and, and there's many pinch points along there, so maybe with a fresh eye, he could, could look at it and, and help the situation.
Councilmember Kern.
Well, now that Councilmember Feller mentioned it, Kyle, can you bring our director on down and at least introduce him to the public now? Yeah, I, I was going to let it go, but Jack had to bring it up, so we at least introduce him on television, and so I, I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of harbor people here tonight, and I'll let Kyle introduce our new director.
Thank you. Honorable Deputy Mayor and council members, I'd like to introduce Ted Chifon, he's our new harbor division manager. He's, this is his third day on the job, so he's kind of drinking through a fire hose right now, trying to learn everything that's going on in the harbor, but we're very happy to have him. He comes to us with many years of marina experience. He comes to us from Florida, where he was over marina for twelve or thirteen years, lots of real estate development experience, and I'll let him say hi.
Deputy Mayor Lowry and city council members, I'm so honored to be here, to have been selected for this position. I'm ready to go to work. Again, I can't speak highly enough of the staff at the harbor. I spoke with many people in the community over the past week as my wife and I are getting settled, and every single person that I spoke with had something good to say about the harbor. So I'm very thrilled to be here, and don't hesitate to ever call or come by and see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. So I have a question, Russ. Since that image is still up there, which way does the line form to get to that kiosk, just out of curiosity?
I think that's an excellent question. I'm going to defer to Mr. Edo on that. Any questions related to?
I would have asked him if I had known, yes.
Any questions related to the operation of the kiosks? I'll defer to Doug.
That's great, thank you. There's a button there, yeah.
Honorable Deputy Mayor, member of city council, Doug Adal, real estate manager. We need to discuss that with the operator, Oceanside Adventures, it's depending how she's going to orient her ticket windows. We would hope she would angle it to the west, where there would be less traffic versus the east, but the boating ramp is actually to the east of that kiosk, so I'm guessing they're going to probably lean in that direction, but we'll, we'll discuss that with her.
So that green area, that's to the east?
That's to the west, that's where we hope we would get her to have her ticketed passengers line up.
Is, that's not really grass there, that's synthetic turf or whatever?
No, it's actually real bona fide grass.
Oh, my gosh.
We still have some.
So that'll have to be addressed, then, if people are going to be standing on that. The dogs? Yeah, put the kids to sit there.
Deputy Mayor Lowry, we're hoping that they stand on the sidewalk portion because that's the less trafficked area. The traffic area is actually to the east where it's in front of the Harbor Village.
Is this the one that the residents spoke about a few minutes ago? This kiosk?
Yes, I believe so, yes, it is.
Okay, that's great. So you'll let us know how that goes? Are we just going to be walking down there one day and run into a crowd, or what, will you let us know what comes out of that?
Honorable Deputy Mayor, yes, we will let you know what's going on. We'll keep you appraised.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, four zero.
Thank you. Our next item is Let's Talk Turkey Trot.
Yes, Kathy Canane.
Oh, there she is. Oh, who would have guessed it was her? Are you warmed up with that, or?
Am I warmed up?
You're ready for the event?
Well, I do have a chance. That's really the question. So I'm here to tell you there's only seven days left. I'm Kathy Canane, with the Oceanside Turkey Trot and the Move Your Feet Before You Eat We'll let them clear the room.
I paused it.
It's okay. It's all right.
Just good. Thank you.
All right, we'll try that again.
Yeah.
So I'm Kathy Canane, I'm the race director for the 12th Annual Pacific Marine Credit Union Oceanside Turkey Trot, presented by Tri-City Medical Center. And Tri-City Medical Center is hosting our senior mile this year. The event benefits the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation and over sixty charities deserve Oceanside Residence. There are seven days left to sign up, and you can register online, or you can go to Pacific Marine Credit Union, register in person, and save some transaction fees. We are so excited to announce that last Saturday, the LA Times printed an article that ranked us in the top five turkey trots in the country. And so I thought I would share that with you tonight, the top five. And it was in their tourism section in the LA Times, so hopefully we're going to get a lot of people, more people from out of town. We frequently attract from, last year we had eight countries, forty-six states, and four hundred and sixty cities. And kind of some exciting news is our new senior mile has at least three people from New York already. So people are coming a long way to go on that one mile on the strand. Some interesting facts is, in our one mile, we have five people that are going to do the senior mile, the five K and the ten K, and they are over sixty-five years old. So we should have a great crowd down there on Wednesday, the day before the trot. We're going to have zumba classes at the expo, we're going to have Fred Astaire dance presentations at the expo, and we're going to have a thousand-dollar costume contest. So anybody wants to just dress up and walk, we're just there to have fun, and we want everybody to move their feet before they eat on Thanksgiving morning. And even if you don't come down to a trot, we really want to encourage you to get out of your house, take your friends and family, go walk at some of the beautiful parks that the city has available to enjoy, and, you know, try to get control over your health. Walking and exercise has a great impact on your positive mental attitude, and so that's one of our big focuses. And I want to thank everybody who's going to come down and join us on Thanksgiving, especially Jack and Deputy Mayor Feller. Thanks for having me.
Wait, Lowry.
Lowry.
Jack Feller.
Whoops, sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, so she's speaking to both of you.
Both of you. I'm sorry.
Kathy, I'll be there, too. I just wanted to.
Yay, I'm excited.
Ten K.
Oh, my gosh.
I've been, I've been practicing on the treadmill, so.
Oh, we're excited to have you. We're going to have a great group, we have some great representation from Camp Pendleton this year, and should have some great on-court, on-course entertainment. And I want to thank everybody from the city for supporting this event, it's made it to really get the kind of recognition that we had hoped for in the beginning. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when I speak to people about it, which apparently I'm doing, and they're inviting me to walk with, I said not run, walk with their group, are they assigned certain heats to be in, so they, you know, the first ones are the real runners, and it kind of goes down from there?
So we do have that. I think that's one of the reasons why this event, other than the beautiful course, is that we start them in twelve waves of six hundred people in each wave, and so the first group is like seven minutes and faster, and then I give you two minutes, or three minutes, or four minutes, depending upon the size of the group. And that allows for people to go at their own pace and really have a good time instead of, you know, pushing and shoving and that sort of thing. So you're going to be starting the first wave, first or second wave?
The ninetieth wave.
Yeah, and then you can come down and hop into your group and walk with them.
Yeah, they're going to carry me.
And it'll be really fun, I think you'll really enjoy it.
Yeah, I walked part of it last year, and it was a lot of fun, so this year I intend to do the whole thing, but I am not running, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Kern is going to run, that's why he hasn't mentioned whether he's going to participate or not.
Well, actual Councilmember Kern is going to be out pheasant hunting, so the idea that he will not be in town.
Not turkeys.
Not turkeys. Well, eighty percent of the people walk.
Yeah.
So, you know, walkers are more than welcome, we have strollers, we have little kids, we have, I think our oldest right now registered is ninety years old.
That's great.
So the ten K starts at six fifty-five in the morning, and that route runs through the harbor, and then the five K starts at eight oh five, and then our kids races start at ten twenty. We have a one mile, but honestly, most of the kids run the five K with their parents, run or walk the five K with their parents. So you can register online at osideturkeytrot.com, or walk into a Pacific Marine Credit Union and register.
So there, the senior division is Friday, is that what?
So we have a special senior mile that happens on Wednesday. The seniors will run a mile at nine o'clock in the morning, and then some seniors will walk a mile, and then we're going to have some seniors that are going to do a four-hundred-meter walk, run, push or pull, or walk with a walker. And we actually have about fifteen people signed up for that right now. So we're trying to make a lot of elements that you can have the whole family there to share the holiday with.
That's great. So it's called Walkers With Walkers?
Yeah, Walkers With Walkers, yeah.
I saw that on the website, I thought, I'll do that next year.
A few more years.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Take care, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
You, too. Our next two speakers are from Visit Oceanside, Serena and Gomaro.
Are you going to sing, or do you want to use each, your own microphone, or we can turn them both on?
Costume today, it was too late.
Oh, those are your costumes?
Yeah, for now, it is. Yes. Let me put this all away. Well, Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you guys for actually giving us the opportunity to speak here a little bit. My name is Gumato, I'm with Main Street Oceanside, I'm the Main Street Program Manager.
And good evening, I'm Serena De Souza with Visit Oceanside.
So also, I want to say I have some window clings here for your business or your cars, so I have some here for everybody. If you have one, please take one. We can pick one up at Visit Oceanside or at Main Street Oceanside, so I just want to throw that out right now. But we're here to basically talk about this decision to shop local. This is a collaboration effort through Visit Oceanside Economic Development Department, the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, and Main Street Oceanside. So we collaborated to bring a campaign to support local retailers in our distance here in downtown. So we have a few activities happening throughout the month of, end of November and throughout the month of December, and actually, after Thanksgiving, we start the celebration on, our celebration on Saturday. So we start with the passport program, if you see, if you want to follow this presentation. We have over fifteen participating businesses throughout the whole city of Oceanside. This is, we collaborated to bring together all of our agencies to support local businesses. They're from South Oceanside, downtown, harbor, and inland businesses as well. Basically- This is, we collaborated to bring together all of our agencies to support local businesses. They're from South Oceanside, downtown, harbor, and inland businesses as well. Basically, how it works, you pick up one of these passport programs at any participating businesses or partners. You visit one of these shops, you get one stamp. If you spend over $20, you get two stamps. You fill the 10 slots, you get a chance to win prizes from donations from the businesses that they provided. And then I leave it to Serena to talk about the next one.
Thank you. So the campaign begins on Shop Small Saturday, which is the 25th, and we wanted to really kick it off in a special way. So we are going to have a sip and shop tasting event that's going to be happening in downtown Oceanside. And there's over 15 tasting stops. And what's really unique this year is that we have beer and wine, but also kombucha and tea and coffee vendors that are going to be participating. So as, and all of these beverage tasting stops are within the retail establishments. So people can purchase a ticket and go to each of the retail stores, participating stores, and then have a little sample of whatever they're serving and walk around and have an opportunity to shop, and they can be with their family. And a great way to just walk around and get outside on that Saturday.
Also, on Saturday and Sunday, we have a Mary Maker's Fair. This is going to be an artist alley. So we have over 20 artisans from Oceanside, actually from North County being part of this. And you come and basically shop for the holidays. That's the point of this. This is a free event, and we'll have holiday entertainment such as carolers, choir, and holiday music playing throughout the whole area there at the artisan.
And to get all of our shoppers in the holiday spirit and give it a sense of place, we're encouraging all of the businesses to decorate their storefronts and make it a really festive environment. Currently, we have 17 official participants that are going to be decorating, and it is a decorating contest. So we'll have a panel of judges that will go around and visit all the different shops and let us know that they are going to be decorating. And we do have cash prizes for the first, second, and third place business that decides to decorate. So again, we just wanted to make sure that the holiday spirit is all throughout Oceanside and give people a reason to come out and go shopping if they know that there's decorations and things to look at in a festive atmosphere. So that's all for that campaign, if there's any questions.
For more information about Shop Local, you can visit shoplocaloceanside.com. It has a list of all the activities happening. But also, I want to highlight a couple of events that are happening at the Sunset Market. We have our holiday tree lighting ceremony here. That's in partnership with the city of Oceanside. Come to the Regal Theater at 6:00. We have Santa and there's the lighting. Also, we have Holiday Market. So come to the Sunset Market and enjoy, you know, those nice, you know, gifts out there. And also, our new publication, Our Discover Downtown, has been out. We just got it this morning. They're going to be mailed to 92057 and 92054 in the next couple of days. So if you guys live in those zones, please pick it up. Make sure to check your mailbox. If not, you can pick it up at the Sunset Market, Main Street, Visit Oceanside, all the partners. But I can drop some of these off for you guys. Check them out. There's a lot of cool stuff in here, guys. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, what, what kind of tree lighting are you lighting?
It's a trick. Ah, that's a, that's a trick question, isn't it? I really don't know what we're lighting. You have, I really don't know that answer.
I think, I think it's a Christmas tree lighting, and I would imagine that the holiday is Christmas as well, so.
That's true. I don't want to get into that one with you, Jack, because I don't want to touch that subject. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Doris Cabrera and Marlene Cabala.
Good evening, Honorable Deputy Mayor Lowry and Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Doris Cabrera, and I have been waiting 10 years for this moment to arrive. So here I am to tell you that we moved into a very nice home that we love, which is just east of El Camino High School and just south of Villarancho on November 10, 2001. And I love everything about it except that for the first six years, there was peace and quiet, and for the last 10, there's been constant all-night noise, starting around 9:30, 10:00 PM, and going until 6:30 in the morning. There are crews of people, I don't, well, there are backup truck lights going beep, beep, boom, boom, beep, beep, and honking. And there are what appears to my ears to be steel beams being dropped from cranes or girders, and you hear the metal noise dropping. And it has affected my sleep to a large degree, and I know that of a lot of my neighbors and people in neighboring communities hear it too. So there's an app that my daughter showed me called Next Door, and a lot of people, like eight or 10 on that site, have communicated with me also that they're very disturbed by this. They've been told that it's FedEx-only. I personally believe there's a, there's a truck driver's school on Rancho de Loro, south of Mesa, which I can see them in the daytime, the trucks parked there. I think they're practicing and training because there's just too much backup, beeping and honking. It's just, it couldn't be just FedEx. But there's a lot of noise, and we're asking for peace and quiet. All we ask is 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, we need our sleep and our rest. And I beseech you to do something about it. Thank you.
The city manager will give you her card, ma'am, right here. So they will contact you or you can contact her.
Right.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Although I am the Secretary of Oceanside Pacific Kiwanis, which is a local service organization, I'm speaking as a private individual, and I'm speaking in favor of Helgrin's, which is a longtime, well-established Oceanside business, which therefore, of course, has contributed a lot of revenue to the city of Oceanside. And things have been said about education. Well, he has never mentioned it. He's too modest. But I happen to personally know that he has been involved in education for the last 10 years with Beach Fund Day, which is an outing for special needs students in the city of Oceans, in, special needs students in the Oceanside School District. Kids are divided into three groups. So that means in a little over half a day, he has provided three sets of educational, he has donated three sets of educational boat tours to these youngsters. So that has been over 1,000 student, children, as well as their aides, and even some of the event volunteers. And he has been doing this for 10 years now, as I said. The 11th one, 11th Annual Beach Fund Day is scheduled for the morning of Friday, April 25th. So if any of you want to come and participate and see for yourself how great these free boat tours are, very educational to talk about the animals when they, the sea lions and information when they see them, very good, very educational. I was on one myself way back. So this, again, is in favor of Helgrin's, who has already been doing the educational stuff for 10 years, and has just been too modest to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Arlene Hammerschmidt and Tim Broom.
Good evening, Honorable Deputy, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Arlene Hammerschmidt from Oceanside. I am speaking tonight in support of our fantastic planning commission and their decision to deny the Grand View Point project. Because I know you weren't there, there were over 30 speakers. 30 of them were in opposition to this project, and only two were in support of this project. There were some that were pretty emotional from their personal experience, either regarding traffic or regarding closeness of the density. There was a lot of factual information presented by residents, and there was a lot of in-depth research done by at least five members of not just the Fire Mountain community, but as well Seaside came in, Altaloma came in. We, there were support from all over Oceanside neighborhoods came together in support to, of opposition. So I urge you, please, to send the developer packing if he comes begging to you for an appeal. That's it. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening. See you at the turkey trot, maybe.
Thank you. Jimmy Naught.
Thank you so much.
Tim, Jimmy.
Great. It's all family stuff, so it's nothing. Perfect. Thanks so much. Hi, everyone. My name is Tim Broom. The address, 603 Seagate, Box 767. I'm a property owner here in the East Side neighborhood. One year ago this month, I came here and spoke to you about the airport and code enforcement issues in the East Side. Tonight, I'll show you some examples of poor or outdated procedures displayed by your code enforcement division. This first photo is the excessive cars parked in yard. I believe that this homeowner was able to tuck five cars in. Go ahead. This one here, this, this person over on Walton, he can get five cars in his yard as well. Go ahead. This particular house, dangerous debris has been in the yard for over a year now. And go ahead. This particular homeowner is able to get a mobile home parked in their yard here in the East Side. Lack of adequate code enforcement shows, slows the progression of overhaul neighborhood improvement. Regarding the airport, some progress has been made with thanks to Dennis Estow, our airport management. The Go Jump aircraft still presents major problems for residents desiring a reasonable quality of life. Residents also have issues with unsafe flying from airport users. And here are some examples for you. Go ahead and flip that over. This particular aircraft came sailing through at 5:30 AM within 100 feet of a residence on Walton Street. Go ahead and flip. This person is a repeat offender. We've got three photos of him. He's N14100. He's still a tenant at the airport. And as recent, recent as a couple of days ago, he's done the same thing. Thanks for that. I'm providing each of you with some questions to answer. When will Code Enforcement Division update current policy to include proactive and sustained approach to code enforcement in the East Side? When will code enforcement resolve problems with their online application when receiving complaints so that those complaints are not marked resolved as soon as they are received? When will city require that code enforcement fines be paid with water and sewer bills so that offenders will stop shirking fines? When will airport management create policies and procedures to properly address low-altitude dangerous flying from tenants? I've only got two more, and then I'm out of here. When will the city recognize that residents in the East Side do not desire commercial tenants at the airport due to safety concerns? And lastly, when will the city address the staffing issue with airport management so that staff can remain at the airport the same hours the airport doesn't use? I want to thank you very much for your time.
I have asked the city manager to give you a call. So she'll, she said she has your number.
Yeah, she does.
Okay.
Thanks so much, Chuck. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our final speakers are Dave and Amber Newman. Dave Newman and Amber Newman, yes.
Whatever works.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, City Council, David Newman, Fire Mountain. At the last council meeting, we heard from what we assume is a resident about why we do not need medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. I would like to address each of these concerns. The first one was stated that marijuana caused homeless problems in Colorado. But John Porwinski of the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless says that the leading culprits in substance abuse are actually alcohol, narcotics, and opiates, not cannabis. Porwinski added marijuana tends to be a companion drug to those other things rather than a sole addictive substance. The Guardian noted more than 100,000 new residents flooded the state of Colorado in 2015, hoping to get work in the cannabis industry, when it was reported to be short 15,000 homes. The Guardian noted legal cannabis isn't the only reason for the, for the mass migration to Denver. Accessible health care and low unemployment also contributed. Next item was caregivers are allowed to deliver. Under the new state law, caregivers are only allowed to have four patients plus themselves in their collective. That's a large scale back from what we are allowed to have today. This will mean many patients will be jettisoned from their collectives, and we will see a major shortage of caregivers. The next one is everyone can grow and possess their own supply. Let's first understand that some people simply do not have a green thumb and are just unable to grow anything, let alone medical marijuana. What if you live in an apartment? What if you rent your home and your landlord does not approve of growing in their house? I guess you're out of luck. And let's talk about the expense of setting up and cultivating plants in your house. You require the proper amount of space, ventilation, air conditioning, dehumidifiers, CO2, expensive equipment such as high-intensity discharge lighting and controllers, as well as grow tents. It can become a very expensive and time-consuming venture that can be more than many are able to handle. Then there's the issue of sharing. Sharing is nice, but you don't necessarily know what you're getting. Mold, bugs, and pesticides are the leading cause for concern in, and in sharing, in any sharing market. There is very little, if any, testing being performed on the product. This addresses all of the items put forth on why cities do need dispensaries providing safe access to patients in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll do my best to kind of pare this down to two minutes. Okay, Amber Newman. Last year, California voters approved cannabis regulations, and it is up to this city council to stop the state from taking over our community. It is up to you to approve regulations as written by your city attorney and prevent the state from pushing their agenda onto us. Councilmember Feller, you have repeatedly stated that you were opposed to any new regulations, but it's not about your personal opinion. Every issue that comes before this council is about the people of Oceanside. It's about the people who elected you to serve, and 57% of them voted for the regulations that you are blocking. Councilmember Sanchez, you too have decided that your personal opinion takes priority over resident needs. Rather than approving the regulations written by your city attorney, you have chosen to work with outside special interests who want to force us to accept their regulations. You're, you've promoted carpetbaggers who will make Oceanside surrender local control for your own personal benefit, and it is ironic that those same people are managing your new supervisor campaign. Both of you are set in your ways, but the attention needs to be on our community and the patients who use cannabis to save their lives. Your lack of compassion, it condemns children to uncontrollable seizures, military veterans to PTSD, and those with debilitating migraines to live lives of suffering. Is it really your opinion that thousands of your constituents should suffer as a result of your personal beliefs? Let's make sure the entire community knows the burden that they will be saddled with should you act upon your own personal preferences. For those who may not know what local control means, it means that this council can amend laws as necessary to keep up with the changing needs of the city, the state, and federal agencies. If this council instead promotes a voter initiative that passes, the only way to make changes will be through an election that could cost us 3/4 of a million dollars. That's a really expensive way to hide your personal beliefs from the voting public. Right now, you have the opportunity to vote to limit retail dispensaries, locate them away from schools and churches, and promote further public safety education efforts. And keep in mind that there are dozens of cannabis-related bills working their way through the state legislature right now. How much will you force us to pay because of your personal bias and your political goals? I continue to urge Oceanside voters, do not sign the outside petition initiative. If you are listening to this and are concerned with the safety and fiscal well-being of your hometown, email the entire council and urge them to support local control by voting in favor of the upcoming Ad-Hoc Committee recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I just have two announcements that I'd like to make. One I have to make is that the Friends of the Oceanside Public Library are having their book sale this Saturday. So I encourage you all, come and buy books. The more books that you buy, the less I have to schlep afterwards. It saves my back if you come and buy books. That's at 602 Civic Center Drive, right over here behind the city council. Also, on November 30th, in this council chambers, I'm having Dr. Neil Driscoll from Scripps Oceanography Institute of Oceanography come and present a seismic makeup and risk of Southern California. He is the one that did the studies for San Onofre, and he has all the data. So he's going to actually make a presentation here about the seismic risks and tsunami risks here from, in Southern California, or actually, North San Diego County. So I encourage you to come, and so anybody that's interested in that. I know Mr. Naught has been questioning about tsunami risks, so hopefully, I will see you here on November 30th at 6:00. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to wish everyone a happy, happy Thanksgiving, and hope to see you at the Turkey Trot. Thank you.
So our next meeting is, I'm sorry, Jack?
I, um...
Councilmember Feller.
I know we've all received emails about the district voting and, and the, the possibility of adding on to a, what do they call it? Amicus brief or amicus brief? But I would just like, if I could just have John explain why we can't, so that at this point, if that would be okay.
Okay. Well, going back to our earlier discussion this week, we actually haven't had a request from the lawyers who have drafted the brief. I haven't seen the brief, so I don't know what legal arguments have been made. And my understanding, having spoken to the lawyers, that they're planning on filing it on Thursday or Friday of this week. Our administrative directive requires that any amicus brief signed on to by the city requires the affirmative approval of the city council. So there simply isn't time. Typically, amicus briefs are filed in the appellate courts, not the district courts. So should there be an appeal in this case, we could take it up at that time.
Thank you. That's, I did want to get that information out, and I want to wish everybody who has family and misses family and is able to spend time with family for Thanksgiving, just wish them the best Thanksgiving ever.
Okay, so our next meeting will be after Thanksgiving. I'm sure everyone will eat as much as they possibly can in one day. And that meeting will be five, three thirty PM is the closed session meeting Wednesday, December twenty-sixth. The regular meeting starts at five o'clock. Here we go. Thank you for coming. December twenty-sixth.